Well, thank you very much for that. And with that, we'll call the meeting to order. And we'd like to start the meeting.
Good Lord, thank you for being with us on this day. Thank you for letting us all rise safely to this presentation. Lord, I ask you be with us as we go about the new move up town. Help us to do the things that's right in season and God's side, season of the blessings side.
If you would, if you're going to pledge allegiance to the flag, where is it? Oh, there it is. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Bray, you get to be with us tonight, so then I will choose both to read the South City Mission Statement, I will read that. To advance a framework for our success through balanced governance, dynamic partnership, and an engaged community. Mr. Bray, if you would, would you read the video?
By a city of safe, prosperous, and vibrant community. Where diversity, innovation, and education drive success in a globally competitive society.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Manager, do we have any adjustments to be made?
Yes, sir. If it pleases the board, we do that too. The first one will be under Old Business, the top point to Schedule G. It includes a budget amendment twenty twenty-two point one and the paving contract with Wal Aspas. The second item that will be requested is a closed session. And this is statute one forty-three dash three-one-eight dash eleven A three, consultation with attorney.
All right, anything else?
No, sir.
All right, let me try to get this right. I have a motion to amend the agenda, continue.
Motion that we approve the adjustments to the agenda, second.
All those in favor say aye. Those like aye, motion carried. Okay, consent again, are they in case of consent?
No, sir.
All right.
Make a motion to approve the consent.
All those in favor say aye. All those opposed like aye, and motion carried. Okay, we'll now go to number four with the public hearing. Like signed it.
Uh, no, sir. See if you can open them.
Okay, without a fair discussion.
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Price and board members, Mr. Manager. I think it's going to be on page twenty-five of your packet. It's a memo that's provided by town staff. The reference item is U D O amendment to Article twelve, which is density and dimensional regulations. The proposed amendment is from section one seventy-two, building height limitation. And it's related to the industrial, heavy industrial zoning district height increase. Staff has provided draft Article twelve and the final ordinance for Article twelve. There's also a worksheet. This amendment was drafted by, initiated by town staff. And it received recommendation of approval from planning board on July twelfth. So flip over to next page twenty-six. If this is a simple amendment. Under one seventy-two B, we have our chart for height limitation for each zoning district. And heavy industrial is currently limited to one hundred and thirty-five foot building height. And staff is asking that we increase that to two hundred feet. That, that's the, the full gist of this proposal. There is a worksheet, like I said, on page twenty-nine. We've provided land development plan or copies of plan recommendations that are in the ordinance. And I'd be glad to answer any questions, Commissioner Price.
All right, thank you, Jeff.
Yeah, and we talked to the fire department about this item as well before we brought this to the town board. But we did that. No, there's no issue from Chief Roy, am I correct?
You are.
I think just to add on to that, just so that, you know, obviously that's out of the range of our equipment. But understanding that with building and fire code, there's safety measures that are put into, into our building codes, for new buildings.
Do we ask?
Yes.
Is anybody in the gallery having comments to like any of this? If not, I'm going to close the hearing. Move on to the, it's pleasure of the board for turning this matter.
I make a motion to adopt the amendment and approve the action in that it is consistent with the adopted L P because it amends ordinances as needs to accommodate uses or situations that are rather not clearly clarified as ordinances. And it amends ordinances as need to address changes physical, social, or violent circumstances that may exist where you wish an unnecessary update in law policy. And further approve that the proposed amendment be waived because it modifies the development or ordinances to be more user-friendly where possible.
Right. We have a vote in the second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed like aye, and motion carried. All those in favor, yeah?
Yes, sir.
Let's move on to the next, which will be old business.
Old business.
And I think this will be the travel, travel policy of the business. It sounds like unique.
It's actually.
Dana.
All right, so what do you mean? Um, what I'm bringing for you tonight is revision to the town's travel policy. We're being, many most might for the board's consideration and approval. The old travel policy and the proposed new policy is Schedule F in the packet. And as you can see, the last revision was quite a number of years ago. It was like it was in nineteen eighty-eight, so time to update the travel policy. After review of the current policy, staff recommends that the policy be replaced with the new policy effective twenty twenty-one, July twenty, twenty twenty-one. Staff's goal for the new policy was to make the procedures more standardized across the board for all departments, just for all departments who are submitting the proper paperwork, the same form, the remaining finances that we were supposed to do. It's also going to streamline the reimbursement process because there is one form that we use, and we're going to find out how we use the refund back. Also impacted that's like the last thing that's due forever. Um, but and not only that, I really think it reduces the employees' out-of-pocket expenses, but it also allows us to have more accountability of what they need to provide to be reimbursed. Um, so the highlight change is what we're going to do is instead of reimbursing the employee, everything takes care after they get back from their travel. We're going to use the G S A rates, per diem rates when they're open incidental, and we'll be issuing them a check upfront based on the documentation that they provide us upfront. We'll know what the reimbursement rate, we'll know what the note that we need to reimburse. And that way, the employee will have money when they go to travel and they're not responsible for basically putting the bill of driving to conference or this class or anything like that. That's how it's coming back to you, because they're going to help them when they get back. They're gone for a week on conference, and they pay, we got paid for every meal that they were being responsible for, so now what we need to do is put the burden back on the town and keep on doing what happened to the people there. We look at it in a very different way, but this was the best option for the family. Some of the other changes that you're going to be seeing, which is some of the documentation that are required in, you'll have to provide us a agenda so we'll know which note that's going to happen, reimbursement for, or paid for upfront. And just like that, so it's just basically a change in policy. Some of the documentation's changed, and it's the obtainment.
Hey, one quick. If, if, correct me if I miss something, we're going, for like the cash, they go with the accidental fees. We're going to pay them upfront. What happened when they get back, they didn't spend all the money?
I get it. Yeah, and because, and what we, we got the, like I said, the G S A for the M rate. And let's say they're going to Wilmington. Um, because you pay it based on where they're going. So for Wilmington, let's say they're going to Wilmington, and they're, if they're for their full day of travel. Because the way it works is while they're there, they get the full travel day. So they only get a partial on their actual pay. So let's say they're going to Wilmington, and they're going to get sixty-one dollars a day, provided that they had to pay for three meals a day. And that's why we're asking for the documentation upfront for the agenda. So let's say, um, I'm there, I'm in Wilmington Monday. I'm going to be there, say, for a down Sunday night. But for Monday, I would get paid the sixty-one dollars if I had to pay for all three meals. But if at my conference, they provided breakfast, they provided lunch, and I only have to pay for dinner, then I will get twenty-three dollars back. So we're not just going to give them sixty-one dollars inside. We are going to spend it, we're going to say, okay, where's your visa? You're being provided breakfast, you're being provided lunch. We, we're only going to give you the money.
And the money that they get, will it be added to their, to something?
That's not.
I figured that'd be a question.
That's, that's not.
Now, where do I get the two? I want to use the town bill or my person's bill?
Okay, well, according to the policy, if a town vehicle is available, like I don't have a town vehicle, but finance has a town vehicle. If that vehicle is available and I'm driving out of town, then I have to use that vehicle. Um, like for some of our public workspeople, if they have to go out of town for some planning, and they have, they know their job, they're stuck, and they have to drive their stuff. Um, the only, let's, and let's say, we in finance didn't have anything to drive, and we had to drive our own personal vehicle, then we're going to.
Is, in just layman's terms, is there anything other than what you've already outlined? Is there anything, I was looking at forward and afters, and it didn't look like it for a whole lot of years. It's been a better record keeping.
Yeah, definitely better record keeping, more accountability. Obviously, we want to make sure that when the audit comes, that we have every, everything in place. And I've used this type of provision of reimbursement before, and it really is a lot easier to kind of keep up with who, who's got company. So it is, I guess, a better record keeping. But like I've said before, our goal was to try to take the vote on the. Those, those were the biggest things, just not reimbursement.
Do you need a motion on this or just a consensus?
Um, yeah.
We need a motion.
I make a motion to approve the travel policy, second.
All right, have a motion, second. All those in favor, were there any quick, yeah, additional questions about it? All those in favor say yea. All those opposed like aye, and the motion carries. Let's see, what's next? Oh, yeah, I think on your, you've got it, old business, was that new?
It's a, because we can talk about things. It's already been in the budget, it's just.
I think on our table, this is schedule B. Raise your attention to schedule B, it's on the table for, the two?
Yes, sir.
And it's.
So I added budget in the twenty twenty-two point one, official year twenty-two, based upon the fact that we had only budgeted three hundred thousand dollars in the budget for, from the power bill funds for this coming year. Well, our low bid, Chris has been trying to receive bids now for a number of months. And they've been slowly coming in, but we only received two. So this year, the low bid was three hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, which is sixty-seven thousand dollars higher than the budget. So this is why I'm bringing it back to the board. We will need the budget amendment to increase to sixty-seven thousand dollars. And then we'll need to have more approved contract with Wal Aspas.
Really, where's the sixty-seven thousand dollars in the? We could have done a long power.
It is.
So do that.
I thought that we were already paying for the single.
We are, yes, sir, we are considering using that funding as well. However, last year, in last year's budget, we had three hundred thousand dollars. It was budgeted for paving, it was not pulled out.
So how much do we have? How much do we anticipate coming out of problem from those projects?
That'd be three fifty and about a hundred, close to five hundred, maybe a little more.
And how much do we have in the power bill fund?
Right now, without the appropriation for twenty-two, which is two hundred and ten thousand, it will be again, we currently have about seven ninety.
And it's about five hundred and twenty-two thousand, yeah?
Yes, sir.
Seven two thousand and eleven. Are there any other foreseeable needs in the future that would back the power bill fund?
Additional paving in the future. You know, each year since we did receive the two hundred and ten appropriation for our streets, we, we tried to really focus on the paving part. But as we discussed previously, potentially using some of those stones for the repair of history.
But the two ten will put us back up to probably five hundred? You shouldn't have.
Yes, yes, sir, that's not important to be.
All right, one other question, I know we have to speak to the planning of building. Is this going down? Sometime ago, we made a list, a priority list of streets. So when we get asked, goodness sake, we sort of know where it is. And I assume we're going right down, we're going down the list, right?
We are. We, we took the list. Chris, Joey, and Daniel took this list. They went to the streets that were on there as priority, looked at those to make sure, you know, that they were still a priority at this point. And put those on there, as well as, as you can see, the intersection of North Second Avenue and Raleigh, West Raleigh was, you know, has been wronged a number of times, and that is a part included in this as well, as, as well as some crack filling in certain streets that just didn't need a total recoding or repaving. And then also crack filling the cemetery.
Well, these streets, are they going to be, are these old asphalt going to be milled up before it's, uh, put down? This is in the price what you have?
Yeah, yes, that's, is that what you questioned here?
None of these streets are going to be milled.
They're not going to be milled.
We can add both of them.
We can check it just. Going to draw a.
Oh.
Reason why I had that question, because I know in the bad, I know, saying when we do, uh, pay, I'll keep putting on top of what it does, they build a road up higher. And it'd be kind of hard for people to get out of the driveway.
Yeah, we look at that.
Oh, okay, that's the reason I had, when some of these streets are going to be, they're going to be milled up before new asphalt go down.
Yeah, we check them.
How would we do this, please? Because I know.
Now, there is some, some of those that are on there, we will, we will have to go there down Saturday. Down Saturday. If permission seller opens the door, that's the middle. The intersection there in North Second and West Raleigh, we all know what we got there from. They gonna do any milling? They won't do any milling. Is that going, kind of happens to let? It, it should be a smooth transition. Yeah, because if it's not, you know, we're going to hear about that. Okay, because I thought if it needed it now, it's time to do it, because it's, you know, it's pretty big one.
Yes, sir.
Bill, have you had a chance to look at the contract? Anything stick out to you as a problem?
I did review it, and I don't think I recommend it be changed.
Any more questions? So the first thing you need, Roy, is approval of the budget amendment.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion, we approve ordinance admitting the twenty twenty-one fiscal year budget, budget ordinance two zero two-two.
Motion, second. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say aye. Motion carries. All right, and the second part of that, we need to prove the contract with Wal Aspas with three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars, fifty-six cents.
Make a motion to approve the first contract.
Motion, second, additional. I'm answering questions. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say aye, and the motion carries. All right. And the manager, you can go.
Uh, yes, board, tonight I have a couple items to bring your attention. One of those is the fact that we've had a number of discussions about Golden Blaine Park and the creek down there and its condition. So last week at, during our Rose Creek Water Shade Meeting that we hold, they, we had a conversation, and Catherine Benninger with I O S Nosis, I think kind of led that conversation along with Jack. And they discussed the fact of having some volunteers come in and assist parts and recreation with the cleanup that was needed, that is consistent with the maintenance plan that was originally recommended. So therefore, I, I think it was decided that Jack can attest to this, that they will be coming in, providing some assistance. And it was asked that they be able to do that as soon as possible. Because I know that I think they wanted, like, two times a year type of maintenance cleanup on it. But we did tell them that we needed some help a little bit sooner because of some of the concerns that we had had with the work. So we are moving forward with that.
Was there any discussion, Roy, about some of the other ideas? I think I may have broken that idea of a fountain in the middle to keep the water being stagnant and helping the seaters. And there was some discussion about the signage that we were told we provided, the, the renderings, the artichub trimmers?
Uh, yes, the, this forest fountain in the, in the, in the tension box that were down there, I have spoken with Jack, well, and he was looking into what would be available. I don't think that conversation was approached directly during the meeting. I was on there the whole time, I had another appointment. But from my understanding, Jack and Roy did not cover that part of it. And so we were kind of waiting to see what the difficulty was in that. And, but the, but the overall, I think, process is going to work a lot better if we stay in touch with them and communicate and, and try to make sure that we can, that they can maintain like it should be.
Just to give the thought, if you put a floating aerator in, I'm afraid it will mess up. If you stir up the bottom, that's going to be. But it doesn't have to, in certain period of time, it's running, but.
It was, and they're, they're not supposed to be that deep.
You put a floating aerator in, that is going.
Well, I'm sure that once we receive, you know, more information about what's available in, in the approach, maybe, we'll, we'll certainly have. But we'll, we just wanted to let the board know that we are working on this, as we want this to start. Secondly, pertaining to Golden Blaine Park, we did have an incident on Saturday where a car, John Cuthbert, went down into the playground area, did damage to playground equipment, and then went a little bit further. The front end moved it up, down near the creek, if not in the creek. So if you see some sort of tape over there and some, well, that's what it is. And Jack has contacted the company about the replacement equipment. I think he said it's going to be about twelve weeks before we can get that, get it repaired. But we have turned it over to the insurance, and we're moving forward from there. I know I had some questions about what had happened. And fortunately, I think it was earlier in the morning, and no one was there on the playground, so I'm very thankful for that. The third item, what I'm bringing to your attention is, as you're all aware of the building innovations in Goldenburg, we have been looking at the timeframe on the November, December period when we will have to relocate the, the L P A to a temporary area. And based upon some of the conversations that we already had with the state, we are currently looking into a local unit that will be placed right outside of where they're located now, because the state ordered some process, location close to the area of where they are now, due to the wireless connection that they will use for the router and so forth, their equipment. So I will be bringing that information back to the board. We, Chris and I have gone and looked at a couple of these units. And now we're working to try and get everything inside as it will need to be because the, the L P A has, they need to be able to lock up, you know, all of their inventory and so forth. So we'll be placing some temporary cameras outside of the unit, as well as inside. And, but again, we'll be bringing that back to you. We have a hundred and. We have a hundred and twenty day window, and we have to allow the state, so we're, we're approaching that rather quickly, and, uh, we'll need to make some decisions about that. The next item is a reminder that the board meeting on August the second will be held at Jordan Matthews. And other than any consent items, the things that we've already discussed, the only agenda item will be the public hearing, uh, for the proposed street closure. And again, it'll be held there. I, I think this one is not going to be available via Zoom.
They can watch it, but there'll be no participation whatsoever on Zoom, just watching.
Yeah, and so we, we went over there, you know, looked at all the glory and figured out how we're gonna have it set up, and we'll get in with that.
So if they want to speak at the public hearing, they'll need to come to Jordan Matthews.
No, we know virtual participation.
Fire fest to hold to the, are we, are we having time on the first speaker?
During, during a public hearing that's hosted like that, there's, there's no time limit.
So you need to, oh, I'll get up there and speak for thirty minutes or thirty-five minutes, then hold you, you can't cut them off?
During a, during a public hearing, yes, sir. Public comments are held, yes, you can hold those for three minutes. But a public hearing is different.
I thought that when we had the public hearing, the county public hearing on, uh, Nigga Side, I guess, three or four years ago now, we were limited in our time until we all had, we all gave our time to deal. But I thought that was a public hearing.
I've never, uh, these are more rare, this particular type of, of a public here, because it involves street closure, but typically, in the past, we have used, uh, I know with the ice and mills, for instance, so you don't need to need to go to there.
Yeah, but didn't they have a time limit?
There was, there was a time limit. Uh, I, I don't know off the top of my head, why we couldn't have a reasonable time limit in this context, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty sure we can't, William, I think, no, I think.
The nature of it being involved in a street closure.
I, I think any public hearing, you're not allowed to do it, um, restriction.
I've done it many times, so, I mean, I don't know, there might be too philosophy to follow that, but, um, sounds like something we need to refer.
Yeah, I, I would like, and I can proceed, if it's open ended. I might better be ordered ready for it, so.
I mean, yeah, you know, with ICE, we had, and we had encouraged groups with the same opinion to have a spokesperson, we had lawyers and all of that.
Now, if the chair, the mayor encourages folks, if you have the same opinion, please, you know, just send a speaker up, because we have done that in the past, um, where Mayor Grimes would say, if y'all are all of the same opinion, if y'all just send one per person up. I mean, we have had that happen in the past.
We get all that in that hearing, and I remember researching it back then. Some places will never put any kind, you know, they just let it go, it's gonna go as long as it does.
Reverend, we were specifically limited, when we were, uh, speaking in favor of the Nigga Side, we were limited to a person, so we asked, Carrie Boyd, we could all give our time for one speaker, and we were limited to three minutes apiece.
Yeah.
They said yes, so we gave all of our time to Bill.
I've seen that.
And he spoke for fifteen minutes, uh, because we, we not going, said we want to stay in three minutes. So I, I remember that specifically occurred, and I thought, I didn't think that was public comment, I thought that was him. I couldn't be wrong, though.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure, that's been my understanding.
But Brian, Brian was probably known a number.
The court and I talked about it, of course, I, I didn't, we did not discuss it yet, but we can certainly.
Well, in the ICE case, okay, one of their claims was that we were unreasonable with our list of rules, nothing to hear, it, it, it was different with time limit, and a few of the others, we had about ten of them, and I read them out loud to everybody before the hearing started the first time, and the court found out, oh, this is what we did. So I got at least one court win, you know, for one of the claims, was having some limitation, but it had to be reasonable, and told in advance.
What was the timeframe you set on that?
I don't remember. But I think it was, I said, now, the groups that were, the three groups that were, or three parties, some of them were groups, uh, who hired attorneys, we had tables set, we let them, it was complicated, but we did it, but we gave them a little more leeway, um, to, because that was, but that was a public hearing, a quasi judicial public hearing, so they had to be allowed to cross examine and, you know, all that.
Do you remember what county case you called them, where the judge ruled that way?
Uh, it was Chatham County case, but it was, uh, again, it was a land use, it was a quasi judicial, reselling, uh, judicial use was more, but, um, uh, so I know in the land use context, I used to, I mean, I've done that before, but, but, um, uh, in fact, uh, Dunn County Representative did, there's, there's, oh, recently, we have big, was on sand, molten tree, all the sand would go out, and the person, this huge, you know, they knew their dial was up, but not exactly scientific, but it's supposed to go up in five minutes. Tyler, so, I, I, we can check, uh, just double check, because it might be that the context of this being a street closure, and it's a legislative hearing, not a quasi judicial hearing, so, uh, it, it might, I don't know that that will really change. I'll see if there's any, if any, depends on street closure, on the statute, uh, has included any, the planes that they were effectively given at the time, that was, was that? Yeah, I don't know.
Well, and, and I was reading some too, but I, I will say, um, if you guys would go ahead, um, since that is the next meeting, um, I, I mean, um, uh, what, did y'all want to do the three minutes, if that's the way we go? Because we kind of need to go ahead and have an idea, so that we know what those rules are.
I'm, the three minutes is, is being considered reasonable. What, 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 William, what do you think about five minutes?
So long as I'm not completely, the vote all good, we can do it, I think five is.
Yeah, it says on, on legislative, that you can adopt reasonable rules, but the board would need to adopt those rules, you know, but if we could have something typed up on what your guidance is, that y'all could adopt before you actually start the public hearing.
That's the way we did it, uh, the last time we moved over there, oh, there was hundreds of speakers, more than six.
And, and I would be opposed to this five minutes per person, if five or six people were like-minded, if they appointed, uh, a spokesperson for that particular group, I would be opposed to that.
Cool in the minutes, you know?
Correct.
And of course, I know the vote, we want, everybody wants to say something, we want him to have the opportunity to say what they've got, and I think you have your words, once you look into it, in, uh, two, five minutes, to the state for decision, whatever it is. Like Louis said, he's been, he's been. It sets some parameters on, and, you know, let the, the, well, perhaps the flow would be.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I mean, about twelve o'clock, remember that?
Yeah.
You know, about twelve o'clock?
You talking about the one with the movement high school? Yeah, and it was more than one night. I mean, it was four nights, I think, before we. I mean, the record was, of the comments was huge, huge. So what did you need careful, you'd like to have, or?
I mean, no, if y'all are saying five minutes, then, um, you know, we'll just, we'll just have something, um, typed up for y'all to approve before the meeting. Um, so it looks like, um, legislative, um, you know, and we'll get William to check in until it's more, that we can, um, fix a maximum, um, a lot of time for each speaker, and we can ask them to, um, to do a spokesperson for the group. So, yeah.
That agreeable. I'll see if I can pull, uh, maybe you can, I mean, uh, the minutes, was it two thousand and seven?
Yeah.
Um, see, we can see, because we had a whole list of them, yeah. We just get some ideas, I can do one all in one. Long as you did, you say it's all right, and it was okay in two thousand and nine, and it's four.
Well, and one thing it, it says is, um, that one of the rules can be that they have to speak on the matter that the public hearing, um, is doing, they can't just get up there and talk about anything. So, so that can be one of the rules as well.
And I think the chairperson has discretion, if you, if they, after a few votes have, that have been spoken, I don't like them, not very useful or not, but saying the exact same thing, you know, I think it's some form of, you can, the chair, have some control over there. Uh, but I'd say this one was important enough, because if it fall down, so, I think, uh, probably wouldn't be, I mean, uh, see how late it gets, yeah, before someone do that. It's something that the chair always has discretion, you know, yeah. That's awesome. Uh, and attorney, you got any information for?
No, no.
You haven't invited some? I'm gonna add some, I'm gonna pick all our friends from down there, because, yeah. They have somebody new, Will, here, who's, uh, think I got, correct me if I get this wrong, our new, uh, community relations.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, we'd like to offer you the opportunity to just, you can get up there and introduce yourself, say whatever you want to. You got five minutes.
Five or up to five?
Up to five.
Is he saying on? No, it's, okay. Hi, uh, I'm Josh, and I'm Union Community Relations Manager from Downy Air Farm. Um, my birthday is due tonight, so it's five weeks last Friday. Um, I'm very excited to be in Chatham County, be in Flower City. Um, I'm from Raleigh, so not too far up the road, um, just by Allen Road on Sixty-four. Um, but very excited, um, I've met some of you, I have already worked with organizations and communities, already gone to love and appreciate this community, so thank you for everything that you guys do. Especially to Flatiron, um, O.C., S.R.G., and so on, people that you guys thank in Flower. Um, Downy Air is a great organization and company to work with, and I'm excited to share our story and our values with everybody. Um, whether that's you guys, the organization, who work with, with this community as a whole. Um, so if you guys need anything, please don't hesitate to reach out. Um, ordered business cards today, so I will be back this day. Um, but yeah, please don't ever hesitate for a spot. Any questions?
I mean, have you even talked to them?
Yes, thank you.
Just so you know, she thanked pretty fast on her feet, she had no idea I was gonna say, I didn't even say. Really did.
True.
Yeah, and so I was impressed with all that, and I apologize for putting you on the slot, you handled it great.
All right, well, thank you, guys.
All right. Anything else? Do I hear a motion, we need to go into closed session.
I'm going to go into closed session for a second. Go, 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 session, one, two, three, that's three, and that's last, eight, three.
Okay, all right, more. So go into closed session. So we want to do, need, need, take five minutes right to close.